This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January 20th, 2022 special meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:00 P.M. Before opening tonight's meeting, I would like to hold a moment of silence in recognition of the passing of Ed Swankowski, the Finance Director for the Town of North Haven, who all of us on this board and in this room have worked very closely with over the last few years. Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be conducted at the workshop for the Board to review and discuss the Superintendent's 2022-2023 Budget Recommendation. To open the workshop, Mr. Stirk will provide a review of the Superintendent's Budget Recommendation and then begin a discussion around the schools and department schedules for tonight's workshop. We have five points that we will cover tonight, or excuse me, five areas. The North Haven High School, North Haven Middle School, athletics, information technology, which Jen Kafkanowski will do remotely as she's not feeling well this evening. And buildings and grounds.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board members. Just to recap last week's budget workshop, the requested increase for the 2022-2023 school year is $1,695,600. And again, this reflects a 2.9% increase. Earlier this week, Howard emailed a few new documents over to the Board. They reflected a breakdown of athletics by sport, I believe. We will cover that portion during Steve's presentation discussion around athletics. But if there are any questions regarding last week or anything before we jump into the high school, you can open it up now. Anything that popped up over the 10 days or so. Great. Okay, so we'll open it up with Dr. Dallai, Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Russo, Mr. Bushnell are here representing the high school. So we can have a discussion around North Haven High School's Budget Recommendation.
So typically, I mean, I know you guys have seen the budget, had a chance to look at it. Hopefully, it's self-explanatory. Our budget is really a composite of the budgets of the various departments and then the administrative components of it. So it probably makes most sense. I know you had some questions originally. If you'd like to ask any questions, we can take you through it and tell you what brought us here.
Well, before we go, is there anything that you would like to point out to the Board that could be different or something that you've added this year that needed more money on than we have in previous years?
Well, I mean, I feel well supported by the Board as always. I shared with you last year, I mean, last month, the 2023 grad requirements and the internship program. You know, even with the additional credits, we feel really prepared to meet that. And, you know, our budgets tend to kind of spike and decrease department to department, year to next. And you see that, and it's one of the things that leads to questions. Could you go, why is social studies up 5,000 or English down 5,000? And a lot of times it's because they instituted a new course or they had a big textbook purchase. And they sort of take turns with that, almost like the sports teams with new uniforms. So there are new things going on, but there aren't new things that are heavily budget-dependent, like that there's a new massive influx we need to make anything happen. We're able to do what we're doing in the course of our operating budget, and we feel good about this proposal and what we're going to be able to do for students with it.
Good. And sometimes I ask the questions, Russ, because of those that are listening may not have the same information that we at the Board have. So I might just ask the presenters to elaborate a little more.
Yeah, and I can just tell you, process-wise, it's a really nice process and it always has been because the budget documents go up from Howard and then I have to say they've been just incredibly clear and easy to work with. We were very grateful for that. They go up to the department coordinators. The department coordinators talk to their teachers. They look at their curricula. They look at what's coming in future years. They look at their books. They look at their supplies. And we do the same. And we, you know, on the administrative side, we're looking at not only supplies, but also our ceremonies, you know, graduations. It's, you know, costs money to run it properly and safely. So we look at what's happened and what's come. And it is a process that invites a lot of discussion. People have input into it. Howard and Superintendent Stirk sit down and say, what do you need? And, you know, tell us about what you have here. So I feel like just to be here at this point, we've already had a great deal of discussion to make this a pretty transparent and document that came from the work of a number of people.
Thank you, Russ. I also saw the kickoff for the intern program this week on social media. So it was nice to see that finally happening.
Yeah, and we've gotten some invites already. Some people are interested. It's very exciting.
Great. Okay, does anyone have any comments on the high school budget? Amanda?
Most of my questions and comments are actually for other folks who are here tonight. So I just have one for you on page six. It's for account 6910, which is other supplies.
Okay.
And it's, you know, a pretty sizable decrease year over year. And I know that you said that, you know, needs for programs like P.E., science, technology, whatever, they wax and wane as years go by. But science specifically took a big cut. So that's, it went from $14,000 two years ago, $6,000 last year, and we're only looking for $1,000 this year. And I just want to check and just make sure we're still going to have like beakers and stuff for the science kids.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. We did have to sell the beakers. But no, first of all, you know, I love that these are the kind of questions we get. How can we support our kids? You know, it's not people saying, cut this, cut this. Yes, I did feel good about that question, seeing it. And just to double-check myself, I talked with Paris Godvold, the coordinator of the department. Does a very nice job. The budget is not decreased. It's actually on par with where it was prior to some big purchases. So they had to replace the original hydraulic stools of the building. We think of it as a new building, but what, it's 18 years. So the original stools have been the kind that go up and down, and they all kind of failed at the same time. And so we had to purchase big sets of furniture. And that was done over the course of several years, and we have finished it. So we're back to being in a position to buy all the supplies we need, but we don't need a big investment in furniture.
Perfect, okay.
And I could just jump in. In some cases, with the coordinators, we had some end-of-year money that we were able to purchase some instructional supplies and textbooks. So for instance, in science, we had a proposal through CNI for physics textbooks to be updated just recently, but we're able to fund them this year. So we're a little ahead of the game, so it doesn't have to be reflected in this budget.
Thank you, Melinda. Yeah, that's really good because as I was looking at the high school budget overall, the increases were mild where they existed at all. So that's it from me.
Yeah, and that really is a credit to the teachers and it's a credit to the coordinators. They're very reasonable. They take good care of the talent equipment. They use the things they buy. They don't ask for things that aren't needed. And it really has a student focus. So I thank you for the question.
Thank you, Russ. Any other questions for Russ? Thank you all for attending from the high school tonight and the middle school. Thank you.
No further questions. We'll move on to the middle school. Laura, can I share a few words?
Really to echo what Russ said, I think the coordinators and the departments do a really nice job of being very specific in their needs and really looking at resources before asking for them to be purchased, to decide what's a benefit to our students. And over the last couple of years, as we've received the one-to-one devices and more computerized programs, they've also been very mindful of what's kind of double-dipping and where we can use one-to-one device instead of maybe some of the materials or what really still needs to be a paper material. So I think overall, our budget had a very minimal increase. And the same thing, our coordinators work together and they've kind of set themselves up in a way where often one department may need something new, but another department does not. So we kind of run through cycles of materials. We've had a couple of big purchases in the last few years for materials, but there's no new large ticket item for this upcoming year. I think as we work through some curriculum rewriting, we may see those things come up in the next couple of years. But I think at this point, they feel pretty comfortable knowing what they need to implement their curriculum.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I do have a few. I do have a couple, that's okay.
Nope.
So your budget represents an increase of 0.1%. It is an increase of $4,803.15 over last year. Can you talk a little bit about how you were able to achieve that? That's amazing.
Amanda, we tried to get her down, but...
Okay, tell me, I might lose that point.
You know, really, I do think it's the work of the staff and the coordinators. I also think kind of the setup we've been in throughout COVID, over the last couple of years, we haven't had unexpected expenses. And where there was savings, coordinators worked hard to replenish things that would kind of last. So where maybe we might have had a big budget in food and consumer science, where we weren't purchasing food, they took that opportunity to use that funding to do some replacements of materials. So I think we're kind of coming off of a place where they were able to use their funds to kind of keep us from being behind.
That's really good to hear. Thank you for that. And I know that at the last budget workshop, Randy had talked about mental health services for students. So I'm wondering if you can help me understand, I think we have three guidance counselors at the middle school. So how many students do each of those guidance counselors have?
So each counselor takes a grade level. So it could vary. Anywhere from a little over 200 students. I think our highest grade level is about 250.
So how often are the guidance counselors able to meet with each individual student?
So they have it set up this year where they're doing a couple of different things. They're cycling through, they call them minute meetings. They're not really a minute, but where they'll cycle through their whole, a team at a time and checking with all the kids. Then they have some kids that have higher needs that they see regularly. And then they're also pushing into classrooms to teach some lessons. So kids also get to see them in that way and form some bonds. Those that in classroom lessons, they're doing quarterly. And they're probably about every other month doing their minute meetings and then meeting with kids regularly in between.
So how long are minute meetings if they're not like a minute?
A lot of times it depends on the student. You know, they'll do some activities, like kind of a get-to-know-you. Some kids will stay much longer because they have a lot of things they want to talk about. And that's how they'll decipher if they kind of, you know, need another check-in or they might make a note to check in with them in a couple of weeks versus waiting till the next cycle.
So each of our middle school students are getting at least some face time with the guidance counselors?
Yep.
I'm just wondering if there has been thought to broadening that program further?
So we also have our school psychologist and social worker, and we just recently were able to add a part-time social worker that we're sharing with the high school. So that has kind of increased the service to students even though it's not specific to being a school counselor.
Well, do we start a CHC at the middle school?
The School-Based Health Clinic? Yes, we do. Yep, Kate. And she started last year with us half-time. And this year, she's in each of our, we have different staff members, but we each have full-time support through that.
Are middle school kids taking advantage of that? We talked about that last week. We're just wondering, are middle school?
Yeah, she is a fairly full caseload. She still is opening for students.
Okay.
I think her personality is amazing. You know, the staff that we have there is perfect for middle school.
Okay.
And she's really like enmeshed herself in, which I think is really nice. She's truly like a part of the school community. And parents have been really receptive to accessing that support.
Thank you. We've had like several people come and talk to us about mental health and needing that extra support specifically at the middle school level. So I think it's really good to kind of outline to folks, take this opportunity to outline to folks what is being done at the middle school and if there are any other opportunities should they want to reach out in and utilize some different services.
Yeah, and I think it's always great if parents have any concerns to reach right out to the counselors. I think they're a great first step. And then, you know, they can always kind of see, are they the best person? And sometimes it's personality, too, who a child's going to mesh with, especially at middle school age. So they really kind of round robin. We have some kids that see a counselor instead of the psychologist, psychologist instead of the counselor. But really, we figure out who's going to be the best fit for the student. So it is someone they're comfortable to go to. And our kids also, on a more basic level, have their team teachers. And a lot of our kids, one of the first things whenever we meet with students, we ask them like, who's a trusted adult in the building that you could go to? And they'll often name one of their team teachers. So I think right from this start, when they come in, they know their team leaders are resource and will at least start advocating if there's something going on there so then they can help them get to the resources they need.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for middle school? Thank you. Very much, Melinda. Thank you for coming.
And we'll move on to athletics. So Steve, would you mind just giving a brief overview of the department's budget this year?
So the athletic budget is a little bit more than we normally would have. And that's for a couple of different reasons. We have two new programs. The wrestling program and the rugby, girls rugby program were added in. And those are pretty much more than at least half of the increases that we found. We also discovered that a lot of our programs needed new equipment that are typically one-time costs. For example, the football program needs new headsets that they use during the games. And that's something that we don't normally buy every year, brand-new. We've been reconditioning them for the last several years. As long as I've been here, we've never bought new headsets. So I don't know how old they are. They're definitely at least six years old. So that's about a $3,000 ticket item. Our fencing team hasn't bought new equipment for the fencing matches when they wear their chest protector, their masks, their knickers that they wear, all that uniform. And that's a pretty expensive set of uniforms for the fencing team. So we have to buy new ones of those. Again, not something that we buy every year, but it's kind of the perfect storm where that team, the football team, several other, shot clock for basketball, the CIACs are going to require a shot clock in future years. So that's another $3,000 ticket item that we didn't expect. This was just put in as a requirement by the CIAC and something that's going to have to be purchased so that we have the proper standards for basketball games. That's for boys and girls.
Did they put that in already this year or they're going to?
It's not a requirement yet, but in the coming years, it will be. So it's something that we need to purchase just to fulfill that requirement by the CIAC.
And that's for both boys and girls?
That's for boys and girls. Yep. So we found that a combination of all these different increases and new equipment and it just was more than we expected to have. So that's why we have a lot more of a, more percentage than normal.
Yeah, I think for a lot of us, when we looked at the budget and saw the increase and the dollar amount, I know we were wondering where this is going from and understanding, I think, what is the cost of the two potential new teams, the rugby team and the wrestling team?
I'm top of the top of my head, I think wrestling with like $28,000.
Do you want to answer it? Because I have it right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's $26,500 for wrestling. That's all, that's annual cost. Plus, annual costs are $18,000. It's $8,500 one-time cost for the mats. The rugby is $13,700, and that's all annual cost. There are no equipment that I'm aware of for that. Then I'm just going to add the Nike Bowl in there because that's something that we are hosting this year. That's a new item that hasn't been budgeted in the past.
Okay.
That has a cost of $3,500. That's mostly, all has to do with staffing for that, I believe. If I'm correct. And so in total, you're talking for those three programs, which have not been in the budget before, it's $43,736. That's equipment and staffing.
Steve, can you share with the Board with the Nike Bowl where that, those funds came from in the past years?
Sure, so in the past, the way the Nike Bowl works, that's the Powderpuff Flag Football Game that we play, we Thanksgiving. Against, last few years, it's been Amity. And we host one year and then we go there one year. So in the past, we've always funded that game for police, for our staff, for the officials, through all the income that we get through ticket sales, football games, basketball games. So we use that account. With knowing that we were going to be hosting this coming year, we just figured we'd put that into the budget so that we wouldn't have to draw from that account, which we prefer to use for any extraneous equipment items that we might need.
As far as interest goes, we know that Raffi's been at the school for the last five or six years on a club basis. So we know that we have this student interest, and it's been pretty consistent.
Yes.
Are we sure, do we have a pretty good idea that there is that level of interest and consistent interest for wrestling at this point in time?
Only based on Mr. Chicarella's presentation a few months ago. That's where I am getting that information. I don't have any other information besides that.
From what I knew about that, because Mr. Chicarella has been speaking to me about it for many years. And I know in the past, I spoke to Mr. Frida, who then sent him here. And we did have a couple of players, wrestlers, who wanted to wrestle but had to go to another school district to wrestle because we didn't have the program. What we have now, how many we have now, again, is what Mr. Chicarella had mentioned at his presentation. But he also mentioned that it was both male and female with a...
That is correct.
Who were there. And I don't know how many females were interested in that.
This year, we had one student who reached out to me and is called a team of one wrestling with chess.
Okay.
Another increase that I wanted to point out was the ice hockey program. The fees at the Northford Ice Pavilion went up. And there's three different areas. There's the locker room fees went up, the practice ice fees, as well as the game fees. And that's probably about $4,000 total, more than this current budget.
Does that include, don't we have to hire police now at that facility? Does that include that additional cost or is that just a scheduling issue as opposed to a cost issue?
So we budget for the police every year, and we actually haven't used it during the pandemic. We, last year, we only had two spectators per player at the game, so we didn't hire police for that. But the police cost, as well as our officials' costs, go up every year based on 2% to 3% increase year to year. So those costs that I just mentioned to you are only Northford Ice Pavilion. That doesn't include any kind of increase for the police.
Steve, would you mind sharing with the Board a little bit about football as well? I know there's an additional home game this year. What's required for home games?
Sure, so this past fall, we only had four home games. It was in, every year, there's one team in the SEC that gets four home games because there's an odd number of teams. And so this coming year, to compensate for this past fall, we have six home games. And so there'll be additional costs for that extra home game, staff, police, officials, et cetera. And so that's something that we had to plan for because we only normally have five games. The other cost that will be included in that is an extra $200 for the doctor. This year, I was asked to include the cost of the doctor on the sidelines to be in the athletic budget. I know in the past, it was part of, I think, student services. And so this year, it's a $1,200 cost that was not previously ever in the athletic budget.
Hey, I'm sorry. I just had a quick question about, going back to the Nike Bowl really quickly. Are you saying that, you know, the football ticket sales, I used to fund the Nike Bowl, and I have it in budget? What's the plans for the money of the ticket sales now?
So all of our income from either basketball games or football games go into a fund that we use as necessary if there's something that we didn't budget for and might be requested of us for some reason, especially if it's an emergency item, then we would use that money to pay for those items. It's not necessarily something that we plan for. So we don't have, you know, a list of items that we're buying out of that account.
So that's kind of like your emergency fund?
It is.
Would an example of that be like a student bus when a team makes a postseason?
That's a great example.
While we're talking about doctors and medical, I noticed that in the budget, there was an ambulance listed for football and the Nike Bowl. And I did, I don't think I saw them for any other sport. So I'm just wondering, I was at a hockey game, not one of our games, about a week ago, and one of the players got really hurt. And they dragged him off the ice, but it took an ambulance half an hour to get there. It was not one of our players. But I'm just wondering, where does the decision come as to which sports we have an ambulance for and which sports we don't?
So part of that is what I inherited. We've always staffed the football games, all levels of football, with an ambulance. And I actually had a conversation with an A.D. today, a different town, who they only put the ambulance on at the varsity games, which I was kind of surprised to hear. And he said that the NFHS, the National Federation of High Schools, only requires a medical personnel to be at the sub-varsity game. So like an athletic trainer would suffice. I think it's a great idea to keep that ambulance at all three levels. It is pricey. We've never considered to have them in hockey games. It's just, it's not something that's done at any of the SEC games, as far as I know. But it is, given what the circumstances that occurred a couple of weeks ago, maybe it's something that we need to talk about.
And I'm not saying just hockey. I'm just saying out of any of the other sports.
Right.
Because injuries could happen, honestly.
Sure, absolutely.
I think maybe that is something we could talk about a little further.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that if the Board of Education is willing to pay for it, then it's something that we can do. I mean, an ambulance, I could be wrong. It's around $400 a game.
That's what it looks like, yeah, in the budget.
Melanie has something to say.
So usually, the ambulances will go by incidents of like a catastrophic injury. So there's formulas that we could use to determine like which level or which sport should require, and then that could help justify some of that. So there, you can go by, you know, incidents of catastrophic injury, equipment intensity, all that kind of stuff. So ice hockey, men's or boys' ice hockey usually would qualify for some of that. But we can, I mean, I could send you that info. We could run some of those numbers if you want. But and I, we do have an athletic trainer that covers our games.
Always.
Always, right?
Regardless of level, regardless of sport.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, for example, if we had a boys' lacrosse game in the spring and a baseball game in the spring going on at the same time, Anthony or whoever the athletic trainer is at the time will choose the one that has more, you know, cause for, you know, incidents.
Right.
Or more frequent of incidents. So they would be stationed at the lacrosse game, but the baseball site would have Anthony's number. And if there was an issue, he takes the golf cart and he goes across to the other side.
Right, and it goes by level of contact.
Level of contact, you know, frequency of incidents.
Right. And then, does the athletic trainer have like all the equipment, like an A.D. with him?
Yes, yes.
And splints and whatever else they would need to use in an emergency situation?
Absolutely. And he has an line item in the budget for supplies.
Which line item is it?
I believe that's in the general A.D.
Okay. Sorry, Amy.
No, that's all right. And I would like to add too, though, unfortunately, we've needed Anthony this season, and he's really, really good at what he does. So he's worth it.
And to take that a step further, unfortunately, Anthony won't be with us by the end of this school year. He's going on to further his education. And we'll be getting a new athletic trainer from Quinbiak Physiotherapy.
That seems really good.
He is great.
How many hours a week are they? It's a contract, right?
It is.
And how many hours a week are the contracts?
It's about 30 hours a week is what we budget for.
So he's, is he per diem?
He's through Quinbiak Physiotherapy. It's like a salary position because he gets clinic hours there. But it's hourly right here that he's getting. And but it's on a basis of 30 hours a week.
Gotcha.
Would it be possible, if there's something that we decide that perhaps more of our sports would need to have some medical supervision, would it be possible or is it less expensive to have a doctor there, like we do at football, versus in case we need both at one time, is basically what I'm saying. I'm just looking at worst-case scenario. um in case we need both at one time is basically what I'm saying. I'm 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 just looking at worst case scenario.
Um I mean, it's definitely something we can look at and review. Um I I know that like we're very fortunate that Anthony is that good.
Again, it's all right, right? Yeah.
That he he is able to deal with almost every injury that out there. Um I mean, I've seen him deal with with everything from just a simple sprain to, you know, head-on collision with another player to, you know, broken bones, et cetera. So but I I I don't know if a doctor would be better.
Well, I'm not saying it would be. I'm saying if we needed to have two people at certain games, you know, with
Sure.
A doctor in conjunction with the S.
A doctor in conjunction with
With the other.
Uh and I don't know what sports might overlap, but sometimes during playoffs they might o- overlap. Just in terms of.
We do have a line on for additional athletic um trainers when there are several events going on at the same time. For example, if there's a ice hockey game and a basketball game at the same time, we will get somebody else to go to the ice hockey game, or Anthony will go to the ice hockey game, and then somebody will be on school grounds.
Okay, that's I think that's where I was trying to dig out. Do we have that? Thank you.
Yes. We do.
Okay. Other questions, Amanda?
I have a couple. Um so thank you for like kind of explaining where the increase comes from, because I was
Absolutely.
it's your five standard deviations outside the norm of a proportioned proportionate increase, but this is helpful for me. Thank you.
Very good.
Um I do have a couple questions on the rugby and wrestling head coaches and assistant coaches.
Okay.
Because it looks like the assistant coach um stipend, the cert- the stipend there is like twice that of an assistant coach for like soccer as an example. So if you can just like kind of help me understand where those numbers came from and um yeah, just talk about that a little bit.
I think we just tried to base it on a team of similar size that was, you know, as far as compare it to the other sports of similar size. And if it's if it's off, that's definitely that's something that can be, you know, it didn't go through like the teacher's contract. Those stipends are all determined by the the union. So this since.
They have to be negotiated. At some point, these are just placeholders for
Got it.
when Steve looked at comparative sports, um where their assistant coaches fell.
Cool, okay.
Um kids on teams, things like that.
So it prob- are these conservative estimates then in that case? Like would you say or?
I would say so.
They're pretty close, okay.
Yeah.
They're identical to the uh assist the assistant track coaches. That's the pretty much where the number gets. Thirty-four ninety-seven for assistant track coaches. I'm just looking at the different things that we have here. Uh it's track coach, middle school gets thirty-four ninety-seven. I'm just trying to pick them. I have the list of all the stipends here. Um co-coaches for uh like, okay, like twenty-nine ninety-three assistant ice hockey coach gets twenty-nine ninety-three. So that's a little less, right? So it's it it's all over the board. I can send you the list of all the stipend.
You did. It's 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 in here, yeah. That's where I got the soccer one from.
Did I have this in the story? It's in here, okay. Yeah, so it's just.
I didn't see the the track one though, so that that's helpful. That makes sense to me. Um.
Can I jump on that before we go to another one? Is there any thought to this seasons or the sports that require more games and more practices versus shorter seasons when it comes to that cost?
Are you talking about stipends?
Yes.
Those stipends are, I've never touched because it's all comes to me from Doris through the teacher's contract.
So they're negotiated through the teacher's contract.
So what is that based on though? It's based on the number of kids on the team?
So I don't, not sure the origination of that because they they date it back and they obviously increase from year to year.
Yeah.
Um but as you know, fo- the football team has the highest stipends. And then they kind of go in groups downward after that. I think the basketball coaches make a certain amount. I think the soccer and basketball, actually Steve Howard and I were talking about that today. Um they're all in certain groups and somewhat dependent on the number of kids that they need to supervise. Um within this budget, I believe, Steve, there is an assistant middle school cross-country coach. Uh
The a new position.
A new position.
It's um varsity.
For varsity, and the reason being is strictly for supervision because there's so many s- um
Right.
students that want to participate. We just can't have one staff.
It's a good thing, right? It's good to have. It's good to have good participation there. Um I also, I got a spreadsheet from Howard on like the breakout by sport. And I split them up into boys' sports, girls' sports, and co-ed sports. So I want to just say, first of all, I'm glad to see the Nike Bowl on here. That's awesome. And I've heard great feedback about that from a lot of girls in the district. So fully support that. Super excited about rugby too. I think it's wor- uh girls' rugby, I think it's worth investing in there. And you know, wrestling as a co-ed sport is also very interesting to me. It's something that I would really like to support. With those items included though, when we look at boys' sports versus girls' sports, and if you look at like the average allocation per team, boys' sports get seventy-five percent more allocation per team than girls' sports. And I understand the football and hockey are in there. Football and hockey are very expensive, right? So I took football out.
But there can also be co-ed.
Do we have any ladies on our football team?
No.
Not this year, we don't. But we had it in the past.
Not that in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's one of them. Maybe it was a few years ago, they're kickers.
I would have loved to play.
We had, she would shoot a kicker, right?
Sabrina.
Sabrina, yeah.
So let's take football out, right? If I look at that, if I take football out, it they're forty percent higher on average than the ladies' teams. And if I take hockey out too, because that's expensive too, they're still sixteen percent higher. So I think we're offering really good programs for our young ladies. I think bringing girls' rugby helps us get closer to the equity. I think bringing the Nike Bowl helps us get closer to equity. I would just like to see like maybe a little more balance in there. And I I don't, I looked at the specifics of it. I think it's reasonable where we have things now. I don't have any specific notes on that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah.
Uh because it's something that a lot of the students in our district are taking advantage of our athletic programs. We have excellent athletic programs here. I wanted to just make sure that we have excellent athletic programs um available at the same level for everybody of funding from from our perspective.
So my only thought on that is, we ask our coaches, you know, what do you need? What what are your supplies that are needed? Whatever equipment needs to be replaced, balls, et cetera. And it's very possible, like I'm thinking of girls' lacrosse. I don't think they ask for much.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe the boys' lacrosse, especially with the with the new coach that is now starting this coming season, he I know that he asks for a lot more than the girls' lacrosse team. So there's going to be that imbalance, but it's not going to, it's going to vary from year to year. So even though that may be the case and and I I don't I don't I didn't look at it that way, it's not necessarily going to always be such such an imbalance.
I didn't think about it that way. That's a good point. I might want to look at it again this way next year, but overall, I think it's good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
And Steve, I'm kind of going off the cuff here, but are there more so like freshman teams on the boys' end than there would be on the girls' end for some for some teams? So we'd have to fund a a boys' freshman team than a comparable sport for soccer or.
Yeah, I actually I actually created a list of of all of our teams, and it it's pretty balanced. We have of all of our girls' teams, there are twenty-four that includes that includes the co-ed teams, that includes the J V teams, freshman teams. And there are twenty-two, this is at the high school, twenty-two boys' teams, twenty-four girls' teams. But like an example is the basketball program. The girls don't have a freshman team. There's not enough individuals interested. The boys have freshman J V varsity. Um football, they have freshman J V varsity. Um there's actually more freshman teams for the boys than there are girls' teams. We have freshman girls' lacrosse. We don't have boys' freshman lacrosse. So.
Thanks, Steve.
And I have that list if you if you want to have a copy.
Has has there been any requests from any of the uh coaches, whether it's girls', boys', or or co-ed team that was denied or told to push back a year or more? So has there been any request for either equipment change or, you know, other things that they may need for the sport that you've said no to?
The answer would be no, but fortunately, they're not asking for for gold-plated, you know, item. So we we're very fortunate that the Board of Education provides us with what we need, but also I don't I don't think they're asking for unreasonable things, like going back to the headphones that the football team needs. We're getting new, we requested new football headsets, but that doesn't happen every year. It's probably been, it's been more than six years since they got those headsets.
Mm-hmm.
We recondition them every year to keep them maintained and in good shape.
I I get that they're they're not asking for unreasonable things, but is there anything in particular that you'd ask for that you
Yeah.
have to say no to, or you're you're pretty uh up to speed on all the teams and they have everything they need?
Yeah. I I think they do have everything they need.
Those headsets were a fiasco at the last home game of the season, yeah. I think I just remember there was all sorts of they weren't connecting, there was a lot of waiting for it. They're definitely, I think, seeing the end of their game.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I do have one more. I'm sorry. I just got it. Sorry, Steve.
Sure. That's okay.
Um so ticket takers
Yes.
at games. Are we recouping enough in the contingency fund from those games to cover the cost of the ticket takers?
Well, I mean, so those fees have been set and they've never changed, at least in the last six years. And I think it goes back even much further than that. When we have a football game, we do very well. When we have a hockey game, we do very well, especially like the last couple of games, it's been very crowded. Um but you don't get as much at a girls' basketball game or a boys' basketball game. And that that's pretty much all we sell tickets to. Um so it just it varies from sport to sport. And but overall, I think that it probably balances out, but we've never looked at it like that as far as how much money are we taking in and is it covering the cost of who we're employing?
That that's really my question because it's kind of a big line item um in the athletic, but I think it's one twelve A. It's about thirty-five thousand for for ticket takers. And I'd just be interested to see, like, are we recouping that? Is it something that like are we shooting ourselves in the foot by trying to charge for this stuff, you know?
Yeah, we do have more ticket takers at a at a football game than we would anything else. I mean, we have three gates. We put two people at each gate. Um hockey, we have two people. Boys' basketball, we have two. Um girls' basketball, we only have ones because the numbers aren't as strong. Um we don't get as many like students as at a girls' basketball, unfortunately, that we do the boys' basketball. Um so so it's 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 something that, again, we can look at to see if if we are you know, meaning the, you know, the income with the cost of the ticket takers, ticket sellers.
Thanks.
Maybe now with Nike being on budget, that might help on that end too.
Uh what do you mean, Ron?
Because now Nike's Nike Bowl's in the budget, and you're not taking it out of ticket sales.
Right.
So you can adjust the ticket sales if if there is a shortage.
That does help. That does help.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve. Next on the agenda is the informational technology department. Jen Kozniewski is with us virtually tonight. So welcome, Jen. Jen, you're up to giving an overview or would you?
I'm sorry, it's very, very hard to hear um from where we are. Uh we can hear Russell and Steve very well, but on that side of the room, it's very hard to hear. I don't know if you can hear me okay.
We can hear you. I think it's a speaker. Um the microphone is on that side of the room. Can you hear me? No, I'm shouting. Um.
I can hear you now. Uh it was very hard to hear uh Alani and Amanda when they were talking before.
Okay.
So if I miss any questions, I apologize. And I just need somebody a little bit closer to say uh the question again, so I'll make sure to answer everyone's questions. Uh the I T department budget uh did go up this year, uh mainly for for two areas. Overall, it's very consistent with how we've done things every year. I talk with each of the administrators about their technology needs. And I also send out a request form to all of the teachers in the district for them to put in for what softwares they're currently using, what they use the most of, what they'd like to continue using, and anything additional that they'd like to begin using that we don't already have. And it also requests for any new hardware. Uh luckily, most of our teachers feel that we've gotten a lot of technology over the past couple of years, just usually the circumstances. And a lot of the things that were requested are just continuations of the same softwares that we've already been using. The EdPuzzle, the Seesaw, the uh Swift videos that we've had at the high school. So a lot of just you people being happy with what we have and wanting to keep those things going forward, uh which we would hope to be able to do. The new additions to the budget this year are the payphone system, which I know that Howard has spoken to you uh about at some length about how needed that is. That kind of onboarding system, the payroll system, the timesheet request off system, and getting all of that off all of these papers uh that are passed around to weekly, bi-weekly, daily in some cases, and then re-manually entered into our electronic systems. It's a lot of man-hours. It's a lot of room for discrepancy. Uh and moving over to the electronic system is something that most organizations have done. And Howard and I would love to bring that into to North Haven, but obviously it does come with uh an upfront cost for us to begin moving into the twenty twenty-two year in terms of our financing and H R solutions for our staff. So that is the largest item. Um that's about thirty-seven thousand. Uh you'll find that in the district software account. Um so that's one of the areas. And the other will be for a significant in uh improvement to the network. Specifically looking to replace the wireless access points at schools. We were able to do so at the high school already this year. It was very needed now that we have some odd eleven hundred students at the high school, each of them using their devices. Uh in addition to all the staff that we have there, is really beginning to tax the network. While we did bring these devices in a few years ago, now having all of the students back in together and more people really understanding how to integrate that into their lessons than ever, i- it's hitting it pretty hard. The high school network is now eight years old, so we are looking to also replace the switching equipment at the high school. Being eight years old is all, you you're right on the edge of hoping it'll make it another year, but not knowing if it will. We have the opportunity right now to write for this networking equipment, the new Wi-Fi access points, as well as the switching equipment for the high school through a bidding process called E-Rate. If you're unfamiliar with E-Rate, it's a federal process by which you put it out through the federal bid system. We get a percentage right off the top of those bids. Right now in North Haven, our rate is fifty percent. So if an example of a project is twenty thousand dollars, we put it out through the E-Rate bid system, uh go through their bidding process, and then E-Rate funds fifty percent of it. So our out-of-pocket cost comes in at ten thousand dollars. So it's a way to make significant savings through that E-Rate bidding process. And that's what I plan to utilize to accomplish these necessary uh network upgrades. Tried to kind of poke at that um last year by replacing some of the Cisco equipment we had in place. And I I struggled to find vendors who wanted to put pricing in on that because of how expensive that kind of equipment can be. So we actually are pivoting over to a more cost-effective network vendor in that process to save money while still getting the new equipment that we need in order to keep on utilizing all the technology that we've brought into the district over the past few years. That network is really the backbone of everything. If it's not working great, it's kind of useless. Everything runs on Wi-Fi these days. So we we have to make sure that uh we have a really good Wi-Fi structure here for everybody.
Does anyone have any questions for Jen?
I do have one. Um.
That's why I'm looking at you.
Sorry. So thank you, Jen. I'm gonna try to be loud. Um so line five thirty A is the communication and networking line, it looks like, or the communication and network line, it looks like, came down by twenty-four thousand dollars. But we're looking.
I'm sorry, I I can't hear um who's speaking right now. I apologize.
Sorry.
Do you want to?
I I don't think that one. I think that's N H T V. Yeah, it's not connected to that.
Yeah.
Oh.
Maybe she can hear me if I talk loud.
Yeah, maybe.
So line five thirty A came down by twenty-four thousand dollars. It's your networking communication line, and Amanda just wants to understand how what 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 transpired to make that happen. Did you hear me, Jen, or no?
No.
I think it goes to one.
Five thirty.
Five thirty A.
Five thirty A, Jen. Line five thirty A went down to the beginning.
On that and networking and why the networking line items went down?
Yes.
Um I I remember those questions. Uh so the for the networking area, one of the reasons that that went down uh was that in part of using those Esser funds to replace the high school networking over there. So the that new Wi-Fi that we put in, we purchased a perpetual Wi-Fi license. And I purchased enough licensing that would be able to service the entire district. Because it's a perpetual license and it's been processed through the Esser funds, that annual uh licensing that we have for various parts of the current Wi-Fi system wouldn't be necessary under the five thirty A. So that annual licensing wouldn't be necessary next year. And that can come in anywhere from ten thousand to thirty-five thousand, depending where we are in our licensing, for the renewals. So that's not necessary. So that's not necessary right now, as long as we are doing the full upgrade to the new wifi system. Because we have already purchased this wifi license for the new system that can serve the entire district.
Um, Jen, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Anita, yes.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to know, because this is a good time whenever we talk about budgets. You applied for and received a lot of grants recently, and I I think I know you talked about it a bit at our, um, one of our previous meetings that we had at the high school library. But just as a, for those that may have missed that, can you give us a a quick update and, um, of the different grants and how much money in grants you were able to save us this year?
Absolutely, I applied for the Pura grant for a high school video project last year. Uh, we received sixty-seven thousand dollars in grant funding for that program. I know Mr. Falcon's class is over there using it now, making their own newscasts, Burt's casts, announcements, videos. It's excellent, it's a really fantastic program. Um, I am currently writing to bring a smaller portion of that into the middle school using that same Pura grant. This is something that hadn't come around for eight years, and so that grant funding was opened up to us again. Last year, we wrote for it and were granted it. I hope we'll be able to get that grant funding again this year. We're only writing for about twenty thousand dollars for the middle school this year. I- it's a smaller program. But similarly, they could have morning announcements, uh, a video studio where our middle school students can create, record, and edit these videos that can then be broadcast out, uh, to the school or saved and uploaded into our Discover Video System for them to watch later. So those are two of the grants that we've recently got. We were also very recently notified, um, that the security bond that was done by the town, uh, this is back in twenty twenty. Uh, we did, uh, write initially to get grant funding for that project, uh, that was bonded by the town. And the last security grounds, we were rejected for unfortunately. I did write for it again, this time as a reimbursement. And it does look tentatively like they'll be reimbursing the town for about two hundred thousand dollars of that project.
Okay.
Um, there was another portion of that security project that we could write for separately, which is a multimedia grant. I also received notice that we have tentatively been approved. They're still reviewing, so it's not a final approval, but it it's really good news for us that'll be able to bring in some more security, uh, tools that will help us communicate with our first responders. Things that will have, uh, geo-fencing, so if a cell phone call comes from somewhere within one of our schools, the police dispatcher would know exactly from where within that school where that call was made, so they could really center in on the problem very quickly. Uh, so that's something that we have received the the tentative approval on, so we hope that we'll hear that final approval soon.
Thanks, Jen.
Anyone have any other questions for Jen?
Okay, thank you again, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our our last item on the agenda tonight, Mr. Diana, Buildings and Grounds, and after that, we'll also hit the the capital budget, so. So would you mind just giving a brief overview of your budget this year?
Yeah, um, uh, you know, I've been here for about ten years and really haven't, uh, we've pretty much held our budget, uh, line items pretty close to the same for close to ten years. We've got some increases in a couple of different categories this year, which have to do with supply chain, basically. Uh, it's really hard to get equipment, uh, there's a lot of times when we meet something for a school, whether it's HVAC repair work or whatever.
Can I ask you to speak up, cause I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Really?
Yeah, surprisingly.
No one's ever said that to me.
Yeah. There's a first for everything.
So, yeah, um, a lot of, a lot of the increases and they're small, there's, I I mean, it's ba- it's less than two percent, Howard, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere in there, um, has to do with the supply chains, problem of getting equipment. Um, having to have stuff overnighted from another part of the country, but ver- very, uh, small things, um, cost for labor going up. So that's all factored in, and 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 again, they're less than two percent, I'm I'm not even sure, I don't know if Howard has the exact.
Three percent is what your total cost is.
My total is up three percent?
It's three percent.
Oh, that's terrible. And, uh, a lot, a lot of it has to do with, um, you know, more supplies, the equipment we're using now or have in the high schools, middle schools. Our control systems, um, they're starting to get older, parts are extremely expensive. Maintaining the types of control systems we have in those two schools, uh, is very expensive. Parts, nothing's under a thousand dollars for a part. So the high school's fifteen years old, so we've been changing a lot of different control work in the schools. We've actually changed with IT, the actual programming, and made it more accessible so that we can control more parts much easier from uh, different, uh, buildings. I I can actually go in from my house now, if we're having a problem at a school, and see what's going on in a specific room. So, uh, you know, the costs that we're that we're having now, again, is just some of its age, and we just need to keep, um, everything maintained in good condition.
I just want to mention one thing for Phil's budget too, so to understand, there is, you'll, you do see a large increase in custodial supplies, right?
Yeah.
And that's the big number that's driving his, which is driving a three percent increase overall for what he controls in his budget. Just to understand that what we did this year is, at the end of last year, we had extra funds. And so we pre-bought a lot of our supplies for for this year, so that it it looks, it's a distorted number when you're looking year over year, because now we're going back to what his annual spend is, right? So last year's budget was about sixty-six thousand dollars, for this year, we we budgeted sixty-six thousand dollars because we bought about thirty thousand dollars worth of stuff. He spends about a hundred thousand dollars a year on custodial supplies, give or take. Uh, I think last year was a hundred and, well, the year before last was a hundred and three thousand. So, uh, so what we're doing is, we're actually moving from an off, oh, an odd year, being with COVID and everything that happened last year, to a normal year, which is gonna be next year, right? This year is the odd year, and so it's it's a distortion in his increase because it's moved, like I said, we pre-bought stuff with extra funds that we had. So that's why it's a little often when you're seeing the large increases in his custo- custodial supplies.
And those, and those numbers that we're back to are consistent to ours three years, three years ago.
Correct. Yeah, historically.
More respect, historically.
Historically, he spends around a hundred to a hundred and five thousand dollars on custodial supplies, and we we budget a hundred thousand this year, or next year.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The, um, the custodians that do the overnights at the high school, and I'm not sure about the middle school, do you have a team also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do those folks bring their own cleaning supplies, or do we purchase those on our own?
They have their own cleaning supplies, um, they have their own, uh, cleaning equipment. Um, they're fully, uh, w- we fund them, and they buy all their own supplies.
And they take care of everything, okay.
Yes.
That's just for the high school and middle school.
Yep.
Right, right. Finally cleaning is who we handle that for us.
And, um, just one thing, uh, someone had brought up to me, and I explained it to him, but sometimes I think it's important when we're on television to have things. Someone had brought up to me that they had offered the school some of the school district facilities, um, wipes and things like that. But I I, we could not take them because they did not fit into, so we're not looking for, and they were not environmentally friendly, and they had other things.
Right.
Um, chemicals in them that we're not allowed to use in the schools.
Yes.
So that was why, it was quite a bit that they were offering to us, but we could not use them. Uh, we appreciate whenever anyone had anything to offer or donate, but because we are limited by what we can use, we had to turn them away.
Yeah, e- everything we buy is driven by the state, and and the products we use to clean with are all green products, probably more expensive than normal products, but that's, uh, mandated to us to make sure that we have these types of, uh, cleaning supplies.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I, I do.
Yep.
Um, so thank you for the explanation on the cleaning supplies, that's great, cause it was a big increase, so thank you for that. I do have a question on the leases line item.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
I have a question on the leases line item.
Okay.
Which is, um, seven thirty-nine C. It's up sixty-four hundred dollars year over year, which is a twenty-four percent increase. Is this that building that we like keep stuff in?
Um, there, I I'm not sure how how it has categorized, but our, um, maintenance shop that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that has, I believe, a two percent or two and a half percent increase, uh, every year, Howard, is that it?
I believe that's the total, I don't know.
Yeah, two and two and a half percent every year. And, um.
The largest piece of that is, um, so you're talking, yeah, seven thirty-nine C.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a new truck for, 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 excuse me, a new truck for facilities. So you, it's a new lease, it's the new, we put the new, there's a new lease in there for a new truck.
So the truck.
Yeah, so our electrician's truck is a nineteen, or two thousand two, I believe. And like, tools are falling out of the toolboxes, the hole, the holes in the truck itself are rotted right through the metal. Cause it's not only an electrical truck, it, uh, we plow with them also.
That that makes sense to me, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't like all the increase in that building that we rent, that maintenance shop, which is.
It is not, yeah, that's minor.
Yeah, I I believe it's just a two percent. So you're.
I I have to look at the guy.
Something like that in the lease, I believe.
I have to look at the lease.
And I know that they put a new building on Vanacore Field for the the snack stand and all that, it's a beautiful building.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Is there any thought about doing something similar so we can have a maintenance shop on our property and not lease from other folks?
There, there was an idea when we built the middle school to do that.
Mm-hmm.
There was, it was in the plan, uh, things didn't go, uh, as as planned while we built the middle school, and it was cut out. I've been trying since I've been here to get it. We have the property for it. But to get a six thousand or seven thousand square foot building, you're talking close to a million dollars.
So, and can I also ask you just like what, who, like, what's in the shipping containers that are on like the athletic fields?
All kinds of athletic storage, of athletic equipment, uh, one of the, one of the containers has, um, equipment for the um, program for the middle school for, um, the theater.
Theater.
Um, there there's, there's a lot of stuff in it.
And we're just like out of space indoors?
There, there's no storage in any of our schools, basically. Um, this year here, we were actually able to, with Howard's help, we we actually per- uh, purchased a forklift. And in my building, we, um, got donated, uh, industrial shelving. And we were able to mount, uh, about twelve foot rack so that we can actually stack more stuff in there.
Remember you told us about that last year, yeah.
Hey, and.
That's good stuff.
It's been a godsend, e- even to take equipment off the truck and it's helped us a great deal.
So, town counselor Jim Jinks from Cheshire.
Is it him, I'm sorry?
There's a town counselor from Cheshire named Jim Jinks who came to our facilities and posted about it on Twitter. And he said, you know, Cheshire's gotta step up their game, cause look at how awesome North Haven looks, look at how awesome their middle school, high school campus is. Which is like totally right, and then I had a conversation with him afterwards, and he was like, but what's with the containers everywhere? So.
What's with the what?
The container.
The container. Everywhere, which he didn't put that.
You'd love a building to store all the stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be nice, it it's, uh, it's the fun.
And.
I would love to.
Well, if we could paint them or something, I don't know, they're they're.
Oh, Miss Van Kasky's been out there to paint them a few times, actually.
You guys just tell my secrets. May have sprayed me.
Might be a union grievance coming for that.
Yeah.
Every time, every time we paint over, someone paints over.
Fuck you.
And some of them are, and some of them we've had that, some of them we actually own.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't lease them, uh, the older ones that you see that might be red and old, those are ones, those are ones we own. The newer ones that are gray are ones that we have recently had to lease, because as you grow and your programs grow, you acquire more stuff. And even this year, with taking, uh, chairs and desks out of schools to accommodate, uh, you know, the COVID and and the planning and the moving of kids, we've been filling these trailers to the max. So, you know, we don't want to throw everything out, we do get rid of stuff that, you know, is, you know, at least thirty or forty years old, and we have a lot of that. So we do, we do get rid of that, but we try to keep the newer stuff.
And I I'd like to suggest that for next year's budget, maybe, uh, throughout the year of next year's budget, we can start looking into what it would truly cost to have, to build something like that. It it sounds like it's it's time.
Well, I have a, I.
But, everything's increasing now.
Yeah, well, I know.
So, I mean, let's just, just take a look at it, I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money, so maybe we can't use something that's gonna cost us a million dollars.
Sure. Well, I I would, I would think, or or I would want to, uh, incorporate not just the the facility side of it in in the maintenance side of it, but also athletics.
Right.
Because we are the ones bringing stuff to.
And the arts too are using it, right?
I agree with you.
And the arts are using it too, the theaters.
Yeah.
They love their own space, have to put things in, to let them, that they cram.
Yeah. The problem with that is, the the problem with that is then that presents a problem with bringing it back and forth. The high school has their own, uh, building area and storage area, the middle school had, does not have that.
Right.
So, for them to get all their sets and so forth back and forth would be another big issue.
Okay, but I mean.
But anyway.
But we we can use, I think maybe if we could get, what, basically what I'm saying is, it sounds like this is a need, not a want.
Oh, absolutely.
So let's maybe take a look at that for next year, and we'll see where things go, go next year.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, we were lucky with the building that we just did at Vanacore, and the unions, uh, put in about four hundred thousand dollars with the labor force for nothing.
Wow.
It's very nice of them.
Yeah, so we had gotten a grant for, I believe it was five hundred thousand with the town, and the unions built and supplied us with all the labor.
Yeah, Melinda's on, she's great at grants too. Find a grant to apply for. All right, thank you, Phil. Anyone have any other questions for Phil? Thank you very much, Phil.
So this concludes our presentations, I don't know if there are any lingering questions, thoughts, ideas before we move forward.
I do just have a question on capital. If that's.
There's one thing I forgot, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so I'm glad we're gonna fix the fridge at Mona West, because the fridge was in there, cause I worked the election at that fridge, and it was being kept closed by a park. Glad we have so many resourceful folks at, uh, at our schools, but I think that that's a necessary, um, item in there. Um, can we talk a little bit about what the roof replacement timeline looks like? And if, if we're thinking that that's the way to go, or in order to enable our elementary schools with air conditioning?
So I'm gonna let Phil talk a little bit about specifics around roofs, I know he's got priorities for our elementary buildings.
Yeah, we, uh, I think we, before we go out and spend a million and a half dollars to redo a roof, we need to make sure we have a long-term plan in place for the schools themselves. Uh, when it comes to HVAC, uh, mounting that's, that on the roofs, do we leave what's there that's old, which is minimal? Cause it's only offices and and mainly the library and stuff. There's a lot of things to consider with that roof replacement. The roofs we have are repairable right now. They're not like the old middle school where we're we're in real danger of having big problems. Um, they are old, but they are repairable. So I I think we all need to get together and put together a a a plan for our elementary schools, where are we going? How are we doing, uh, you know, things in the future for the next ten years, so before we spend a million and a half dollars.
Thank, thank you for that lead in. So I think two years ago, Amanda, you asked me a plan for our elementary buildings. What would that look like? And Howard and I were just talking about that a little bit today, and we're gonna spend this summer start investigating what angle to take on that, because there are many different ways to go about this, there's, uh, numerous studies that need to be had around future enrollments and and, uh, talking to the state and see what they can provide us, and also inquiring, uh, around districts around the state to see how they tackle some of those projects. And that also includes speaking to the town, uh, the communities and whatnot, so we need to start working on a plan, and that's our, our summer work.
Can I ask that a board member be on the planning committee?
Of course.
I think if we're going five years, uh, we can take a board member who has, uh, quite a bit of time on their, um, time, and maybe we can have a board member on there too, I think that's be a good idea. Then if we get closer, whoever wants to volunteer can can do that. Okay. Just like how I volunteer us for things. Um, any other questions or comments?
Okay. Uh, I just wanna thank the middle school, the high school, Steve and Phil for your presentations, uh, they were very good for us. They're easy to understand, uh, you know, as you can see, the less questions we ask means that we're under, we're we're getting it. And every year we come back and we say to the high school, we say to the middle school, we say to the elementary schools, is this it? You know, cause we're, we wanna make sure, um, that you're getting everything you you need, cause that's our goal as a board of education, is to ensure you have everything you need to teach our children and keep our chi- our our children and our staff safe and happy at the schools. So thank you all for that wonderful, um, presentation. So now, may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three superintendent's budget recommendation and capital budget as proposed with a two point nine percent increase?
So.
May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I?
Yeah.
Um I just would like to, in closing, thank the board. It's wonderful to come sit here and and speak with you. And as Anita just said, the questions are what can we do more for you? And um just on behalf of the the teachers, the administrators, department heads, Melinda, it's very comforting for us and knowing that we have your support. And I know that the families and students uh feel that each year as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for for your continued support.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Fully cut off. Okay, the motion passes. When is the uh, we present this to the town when?
Saturday, February fifth.
Okay, but you're going to send it over to them earlier, right? By the twenty-seventh of January?
Twenty-seventh of this weekend. Transmitted this.
So Saturday, February fifth. Um usually they're like nine or ten AM.
Yeah, we're different.
It's been earlier, maybe thirty.
I think it's either IT goes first or we go first and very.
Okay, um and and again, board members, if any of us, you can come that day. Let's go ahead and do that. May I have a motion to adjourn the January twenty twenty-two special meeting of the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? I just want to thank you guys for all the extra time the last few weeks. All in favor?
Uh.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.